Good morning, everyone. I'm Dan Garodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's public meeting of November 29, 2023. We're going to start today with a special review session to go over modifications the City Council made to the Belmont Osborn proposal for new housing in Brownsville, Brooklyn. The Commission, as you all recall, voted to approve this project in September. We will get an update on the Council's modifications from the Department of City Planning's Brooklyn office. Following the special review session, we'll get into today's public meeting, starting with a vote on a special natural area district authorization to add a sunroom and swimming pool to an existing home at 695 West 246th Street in Riverdale, in the Bronx. Next up, the Commission will hold a vote on 2226 Third Avenue. This proposal in East Harlem would facilitate a predominantly life sciences building that would create good-paying jobs only a five-minute walk from the 125th Street subway station and help advance this jobs-producing economic sector in our city. New York City is a national leader in life sciences, and we look forward to further bolstering this vital sector through our City of Yes for Economic Opportunity Initiative. Moving from jobs to homes, we will vote on a project along the Whitestone Expressway in Queens that would create over 400 homes, around 110 of them permanently income-restricted on the site of Whitestone Lanes. The site, which would include 14,000 square feet of public open space, would be adjacent to a shopping plaza with a supermarket near several bus stops and close to an underpass that would allow residents to access a DMV and a multiplex on the other side of the highway. Another residential project up for vote today is the proposal for 3742 30th Street in Dutch Kills, Queens. It would include over 60 homes and a supermarket via the Department of City Planning's FRESH program, which brings healthy food options to underserved communities in all five boroughs. The last votes today are both on Staten Island, first being a special natural area district authorization at 61 Coverley Avenue to allow a home enlargement and the addition of a patio and swimming pool, and the second a certification to facilitate a single-family home at 51 Cromwell Circle. We only have one public hearing for today, but certainly an important one. Timbale Terrace is a proposal by the Department of Housing, Preservation, and Development to turn a NYPD parking lot in East Harlem into a 100% income-restricted residential development with around 340 homes, nearly 100 of them reserved for formerly homeless New Yorkers. The building would be located near Marcus Garvey Park and the 23 subway stop at 116 and serve as the new home of the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance. So with that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to you, Sarah, to get us going for the special review session.
Good morning, and welcome to the City Planning Commission's Special Review Session for Wednesday, November 29, 2023. The time is 10:05 a.m., and a quorum is present. Our first item on the Special Review Session agenda is a City Council Modification Scope Determination for Zoning Map and Zoning Text Amendments in Brooklyn Community District 16. Our presenter is Juki Sai.
All right, Juki, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a City Council Modification to the Belmont Osborn rezoning, a private application by Osborne Belmont Properties LLC for a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brownsville Community District 16, Brooklyn. This application was approved by the CPC on 9/11/23. This modification changes the boundaries of the area to be rezoned, as well as the MIH options. First, the boundaries. Here, you can see the CPC-approved boundaries of the rezoning area, covering portions of Blocks 3523 and 3524. And you can see those labeled in purple on the right-hand side of this map. So those were the original boundaries approved. Here, you can see the City Council modified boundaries, which removed the portion of the block 3523 from the area to be rezoned. So you can see that area in yellow and the area in green. The area in green would stay, and the area in yellow would be removed from the area to be rezoned. In addition, the City Council proposes to modify the zoning text amendment to Appendix F, removing MIH Option 2 and adding the deep affordability option. Both proposed modifications are within the scope of the environmental review for this project and the land use review. Thank you. I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Juki. Let me just start by a quick refresher here. This was proposed to be two separate buildings with 230 units. Is that correct?
Yes.
And they were... The level of affordability of this development, was that remind us?
So in the last talks, the developer was seeking to make the building 100% affordable with... Through the Ella program with HPD, and that was something that the Commission wrote into its recommendations for this project.
Okay, so 230 units over two buildings, anticipated to be 100% affordable. Yes. The Council cut out 3523.
Yes.
What number of units will be lost from this proposal with that cut?
So I went in and looked at this, and I actually looked at the numbers in the EAS, the Environmental Assessment Statement. And in that reasonable worst-case development scenario, there's roughly... It projects roughly 242 units. You know, it's roughly the same numbers, slightly more just for the with-action scenario. But using those numbers, cutting out Block 3523 from the rezoning area would mean the removal of roughly 123 units or so. And just of the 242 proposed, or not proposed, that were part of the with-action scenario. So using those numbers from the EAS, which is publicly available.
Okay, so a loss of 123 100% income-restricted units as a result of this action?
Yeah, more or less.
Okay. Did the Council provide any rationale for its decision to cut 123 affordable units from the proposal?
Regarding the boundaries, no, there was no rationale for that.
Let me see if there are other questions. Commissioner Bozark?
Can you remind us who the council member is here? And I know we're just opining on whether it's within scope. That's kind of what our task is. But for a 100% affordable project in the housing crisis we're facing, it's really disappointing to see this type of action.
I believe it's Councilmember Mealy, 41st District.
So no rationale was given at all for the action?
There was some rationale, I believe, regarding the MIH option to preserve deep affordability. And there's... There was a little bit of rationale given around that.
That's going deeper on the options, but not for cutting out.
Yeah, explicitly regarding the boundaries, no, I don't believe so. Not that we received.
Thank you. Vice Chair Knuckles?
Thank you. Juki, I just wanted to clarify, this project was Ella-proposed income levels when it came before us. So what in fact is the... What is the Council modifying to from Ella?
So the modifications only apply to the just the boundaries of the rezoning area. And I think it doesn't apply explicitly to... Like this Council modification doesn't apply explicitly to the levels of affordability. It's simply the... Just the boundaries of the area to be rezoned. But in this, going off of the reasonable worst-case development scenario in the EAS, the understanding is that the no-action scenario, meaning no rezoning on that yellow area, would likely mean no development, no projected development on that site. So that's going off of what was in the EAS for this project. Does that sort of answer your question, Commissioner? Because it wasn't... Yeah, not explicitly opining on the financing, but the modification just to the boundaries of it. But with no rezoning, the EAS projects no new development on that yellow area that is being cut.
No, I thought you said at the outset that they were modifying the income level to a lower...
Oh, sorry. For the MIH options, it is... So that would just be the MIH option for deep affordability, like Option 1 and deep affordability?
Yeah.
But the sort of option for MIH is not tied to the... Like, the nature of the financing? It's just requiring a certain level of affordability, but not explicitly tied to the method of the financing for it?
Because Ella, I would assume, I don't know, I'm asking, Ella, I would think is equivalent to, at least at the very least, MIH1, if not lower, right?
Yeah, I believe just in this case, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Sarah, Chair, the MIH is like the law that governs the levels of affordability in the unit, and then how the subsidy, or whether it's a subsidy, or whether, you know, the developer in theory could pay for the affordability themselves. But the MIH is just the locking in of the level of affordability. And then Ella itself is the subsidy that this developer would likely use to achieve that level. And in all likelihood, it would be, I mean, far more affordability than is mandated in this case.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Benjamin, then Commissioner Kramani.
Hi, Juki. Sorry to bother you again.
No, not at all. I love questions from Commissioner Benjamin.
But first, C43, what's the residential FAR?
Unfortunately, I don't have that on hand.
Okay. Because it leads directly to my question. Removing that site, have we created a spot zone to benefit just one owner that doesn't really bear a relationship to the zoning around it?
So as far as the, like, technical creation of a spot zone, I think that's something sort of in Council's hands. I think the rationale here for what was created by this zoning district was it's not just coterminous what was owned by the property owner. And I'm not sure if these lots...
That was the original one, but then we removed the other site. So now we're looking at one site, one owner, one beneficiary. That's not... What I see is it's surrounded by R6 and the C43, and I'm not sure off the top of my head what the FAR is for C43 residential.
Yeah. So unfortunately, I don't have a great answer on the legal definition of a spot zoning, but I think I understand the sentiment of what you're saying, and I don't have a...
Well, then I would go further. If it were a spot zone...
Yeah.
Would this modification still be within scope if it created a spot zone?
So I think...
I know that's a legal question, and you may want to consult with Susan, or... But I'd really like an answer before I vote.
Yeah. That's something I'm going to need to consult with Council on. And I can say that the... A lot of what our examination of the in-scope is within sort of what was analyzed in the environmental component of this, but I am...
But it's also the four corners of the proposed action. And it's not clear to me that that works that well in that second analysis of the action.
Yeah.
I'll have to follow up with that. And I will note that our General Counsel has reviewed the Council's actions and believes that this is within scope. And so she has considered the removal of the site. I think there's, you know, certainly disappointment that that site was removed. It's not the first time that the Council has removed sites within a small rezoning area to leave just the bare bones. But it is her view and the Department's view that this is within scope. So, okay.
Could we hear from her, or could she?
I don't know the answer to that question because she's not presently in the room. So I will consider that when you ask your questions, and I will see if she is in the building. But for now, let's move on to Commissioner Kramani.
Thank you. Thank you. I think my question is related, but so when that parcel is removed, and I don't know that you know this, does it then just stay vacant?
So I think a couple things can happen here. In the environmental assessment, or the EAS for this project, the assumption was that if this parcel didn't receive the rezoning, that it would not get residential built on it. Currently, there are... I believe there's a Dollar Tree that was likely going to return. There were a couple commercial tenants, but I believe at the time of, like, during public review, may have vacated. There's a chance, you know, those commercial vacancies could be filled. But as far as what happens on this property, what was projected in the no-action scenario, which would be here, is just no new development. But potentially, you know, what is there currently is actually all commercial. So I believe the People's Choice Market, which is owned by the owner of these lots, which I believe was sort of ramping down its operations, as well as the Dollar Tree, and then the two smaller commercial stores on Belmont.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gold?
So, Juki, I guess just what I'm going to say is probably really obvious. But clearly, there are a lot of questions about sort of what the rationale was, and I'm sure there was a rationale. So I guess maybe more a statement than a question for future on something like this, which I'm sure jumps out at you as well, is, you know, it seems irrational from the distance, but there's probably some rationality. It would always be great to have just some detail on what the thinking was for what that's worth.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate that. And if I had something to pass on, I absolutely would. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to just hold for a moment because we have some flexibility here to give us a second to bring General Counsel's office in to answer the question about spot zoning concerns versus scope. So we'll just hold for a moment. We're going to proceed with our regular meeting, and then I will reopen the special session. Assuming, Madam Secretary, that that is within my power to do, that is what I am going to do.
Yes, we can close out the special review session, and we'll bring it back at the end of the public meeting to continue Q and A.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay, on to... So we're going to close our special review session, and we are going to move on to the public meeting of the City Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, you can go ahead and get us started for that.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting, held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal and in person in the CPC Hearing Room 120 Broadway Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, November 29, 2023. I will now call the role Chair Garodnik.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Present.
Commissioner Bozark.
Here.
Commissioner Sarula.
Here.
Commissioner Crowell.
Here.
Commissioner Duick.
Here.
Commissioner Gold.
Here.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Here.
Commissioner Kramani.
Here.
Commissioner Muddin.
Here.
Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, November 15, 2023.
Great, thank you. On the minutes, I make a motion to approve the minutes of November 15. Is there a second? Commissioner Maureen, thank you. It's seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The minutes are approved.
Scheduling calendar numbers 1 through 3. We have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, December 13, 2023, for a public hearing to be held in person in the CPC Hearing Room 120 Broadway and remotely through the NYC Engage Portal.
Great. I make a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Duick, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Resolution's adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page 5. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 4 through 9 have been laid over. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 10 and 11, 695 West 246th Street, SNAD. CD8, calendar number 10, N240023ZAX. Calendar number 11, N240024ZAX. And the matter of applications for the grant of authorizations concerning 695 West 246th Street, SNAD, for the adoption of calendar numbers 10 and 11. Chair Garodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Can I pass or not? I just need to find my notes.
Okay. Commissioner Bozark, yes. Commissioner Sarula.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 14, 15, and 16. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 14, 15, and 16, 2226 Third Avenue, CD11, calendar number 14, C230344ZMM. Calendar number 15, N230345ZRM. Calendar number 16, C230346ZSM. As a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments and special permit concerning 2226 Third Avenue, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 14, 15, and 16. Chair Garodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Sarula.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 14, 15, and 16. Borough of Queens, calendar numbers 17 and 18, Whitestone Lanes rezoning, CD7, calendar number 17, C230091ZMQ. Calendar number 18, N230092ZRQ. As a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning Whitestone Lanes rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 17 and 18. Chair Garodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
I'm voting aye on these reports, but I did have some concerns that the reports did... I did not think reflected adequately the discussion that the Commissioners had about both the open space and the parking issues that had been raised by the Community Board. And I would hope that the discussions about those would continue, since it is my understanding that zoning is permissive, not prescriptive, and that there is still room for the developer to discuss those issues and arrive at a more community-friendly solution. That being said, I vote aye.
Commissioner Bozark, yes. Commissioner Sarula.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
I'm voting yes, but I also wanted to note that I agree with the Borough President's assessment of providing deeper affordability. And the reason why I'm voting yes here is this particular area needs more affordable housing, and it doesn't have as many as others needed. I obviously normally vote, sometimes I vote no on these types of projects that don't have enough income-restricted housing, but because of this particular area that needs it, I'm voting yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
I would like to echo the statements of Commissioner Benjamin. I agree with her on those points. I'm voting yes, but I hope at the council level that they do address the concerns that were raised, both by the Community Board and by the Commission. Thank you.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 17 and 18. Borough of Queens, calendar number 19, 3742 30th Street, FRESH, CD1, N240028ZAQ. And the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning 3742 30th Street, FRESH, for the adoption of calendar number 19. Chair Garodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Sarula.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Calendar number 19 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 20 and 21, 61 Coverley Avenue, CD2, calendar number 20, N230364ZAR. Calendar number 21, N230365ZAR. As a matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning 61 Coverley Avenue, for the adoption of calendar numbers 20 and 21. Chair Garodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Calendar number 22 has been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 9.
Great. Thank you very much. We're going to ask those who are here to testify today to limit their comments to three minutes, unless we have an applicant team, which of course we do. So, Madam Secretary, why don't you call this item that we have for public hearing today?
Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 23 and 24, Timbale Terrace, CD11, calendar number 23, C240046HAM. Calendar number 24, C240047PQM. Public hearing in the matter of applications for UDOT designation, project approval, disposition of city-owned property, and acquisition concerning Timbale Terrace.
Great, thank you. And on behalf of the applicant team, we have a number of representatives, including Marietta Ulasiya, Michelle Ponce, Miles Monahan, Jorge Chang, Agata Naklica, Melissa Otten, Diane Luard-Michel, and I think that's it. So with that, welcome. You have 10 minutes.
All right. Thank you. So, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Agata Naklica, and I'm a Manhattan Borough Planner at HPD. I'm joined by my HPD colleagues and our development partners, who will introduce themselves during the presentation or during the Q and A, and who are working with us on the Timbale Terrace project. This includes the Mega Development and Contracting Group, the Lantern Organization, and the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance, who will occupy the ground floor community facility space. And as part of the ULRT process, which started with the certification of this application on August 21, 2023, we're excited to be here today presenting the Timbale Terrace application, which will bring much-needed affordable housing and an active ground floor use to the East Harlem neighborhood. The Timbale Terrace project is to be located at 101 East 118th Street and will be developed on 11 city-owned lots located on Block 1767 in Manhattan's CB11. And briefly, the proposed development will be a new, as-of-right, 19-story building containing approximately 340 affordable and supportive housing units, and will include ground floor space for the Afro-Latin Music and Art Center. And to facilitate the project, HPD is proposing the following land use actions: a UDOT designation and project approval, and the disposition of the development site, and an acquisition of approximately 30,000 square feet of the proposed development on the ground and second floors to provide space for 75 NYPD replacement parking spaces. And the site is currently utilized as surface parking for the NYPD's 25th local precinct. And I'll turn it over to Michelle Ponce from Mega to speak a little bit more about the proposed development. NYPD replacement parking spaces. And the site is currently utilized as surface parking for the NYPD's twenty-fifth local precinct. And I'll turn it over to Michelle Ponce from Mega to speak a little bit more about the proposed development.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Michelle Ponce, and I'm here on behalf of Mega. Mega is co-developer and a full-service general contracting, construction management, and real estate development firm. For the past thirty years, Mega has focused on affordable housing and working with community-based and not-for-profit organizations. I'm joined here today by my colleagues from the Lantern Organization and Community Services, who is also co-developer for this project. Lantern is a not-for-profit developer with over twenty-five years of experience and has been in the East Harlem community since the year two thousand. Also joined here today by the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance, our community partner, Urban Architectural Initiatives, our project architect, and Acreman, our land use attorney. The Timbale Terrace project will be a one hundred percent mixed-use affordable housing project that will deliver on affordability, maximize community benefits, and be the highest and best use of publicly owned land. The East Harlem Neighborhood Plan, which was an extensive engagement, public engagement process, specifically identified this plot in the zoning and land use section as a publicly owned site that should be repurposed for a hundred percent affordable housing. And more recently, in twenty twenty-three, Community Board eleven's Statement of District Needs reaffirmed the need for affordable and supportive housing in Community Board eleven. Timbale Terrace will have approximately nineteen thousand square feet of community facility space and will include replacement parking for the NYPD's twenty-fifth precinct parking. In total, there will be three hundred and forty-one units, including one Super's unit. There will be ninety-nine supportive units on site that will receive supportive services from Lantern, and thirty percent of the units will be sized for families. This building will also have a hundred and twenty units for community preference of CD eleven residents. This is a highly amenitized building. The sixteenth floor has specific amenities like fitness rooms and community rooms. There'll be twenty-four on seven security. And on the ground floor, as Agata mentioned, we will have an active storefront use for the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance Music and Art Center. This will activate the Park Avenue viaduct and improve security, which is not being currently achieved with the current use of the parking lot. And you'll hear more about ALGA and the intended programming later on in the presentation and during the public testimony piece. So, Timbale Terrace will be nineteen stories. It will be designed and built to passive house standards and will be certified to enterprise green communities. There will be setbacks on the third, seventh, eighth, and sixteenth floors, and residents will have access to outdoor landscape areas on the third, eighth, and sixteenth floors. And as you can see here on the site plan, the whole project in its entirety, the twenty-fifth precinct parking lot will be located on the first and second floors of the building with an entrance along one nineteenth street where the current parking lot entrance is, so there will be no change in vehicular traffic patterns. The residential entrance to the building will be on one eighteenth street, and ALGA will have entrance along Park Avenue. The proposed affordability for Timbale Terrace, we are going to finance the project through HPD and HGZ's Extremely Low and Low Income Affordability Program, also known as ELLA, to deliver an integrated residential community and target deep levels of affordability. As you can see here in the chart, we have eighty-eight units at thirty percent of the area median income, seventy units at fifty percent of the area median income, and eighty units at, eighty-three units, apologies, at eighty percent of the area median income. And here on this chart, we can also see what the current AMI is based on income and the maximum rent for each unit. So, for example, if you are a household that earns fifty percent of the area median income, you earn approximately between forty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty up to eighty-one thousand nine hundred dollars per year, and you would be expected to pay approximately one thousand one hundred forty-six up to one thousand five hundred sixty-four in monthly rent. Again, this will vary by your household size and the unit size that you're looking for. And then lastly, I'd like to go over the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance Music and Art Center. This will be the permanent home for ALGA and will house all of ALGA's staff, performances, and educational programs. ALGA will activate the Park Avenue corridor with an active storefront that will include performance spaces, rehearsal spaces, music educational facilities, meeting rooms, event spaces, coworking spaces, a cafe, and shop. And with that, I conclude my presentation. We are happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Questions from, starting with Commissioner Osorio.
Hey, thank you very much for the presentation. I wanted to ask you a couple things. First of all, I wanted to commend the city for proposing a nineteen-floor passive house building. Is that, I want to confirm, I heard correctly?
All right, could you repeat the question?
The building, the proposed building is passive house?
Yes, we're building to passive house standards.
Nineteen floors, right?
Yes.
This is, I want to commend you because this, on the record, I want to make sure that we can confirm that this is possible. I think that this is a great precedent. You know, recently, we've been discussing in this room the CD of ES zoning text amendment for carbon neutrality.
Mm-hmm.
Which stopped at three floors. And so, I want to sort of like underscore the importance of, you know, discussing proposals of this scale that actually show that we can be, we can aim higher in that regard. So, kudos to you on that.
Thank you.
The second question that I wanted to ask is, I was wondering if you can discuss a little bit the, your response to the Borough President's recommendation about the possibility to prioritize previously displaced residents in terms of the affordability programs, one, and two, the recommendation to increase the larger units. I know that you pointed out that thirty percent of the units are going to be for, you know, larger families, but the number of three bedrooms is still very slow, very, very slow, very low. Sorry. So I wanted to ask if, you know, what's your general response to that recommendation?
I'll take the first one. So, in terms of, I think you're asking about local preference. For the affordable units, a hundred and twenty will have local preference for community district eleven. In terms of the unit mix, I'll turn it over to HPD.
Sure. So, the proposal right now, you're specifically referencing the three bedrooms or two and three? Yeah, so right now, we're at five percent, three bedrooms. That is where we landed with a financially feasible project. As you hear many, many times here, building affordable housing is really a balancing act, especially when it comes to the financial feasibility. However, ULERP is an ongoing process with open conversations, and so we hear what you're saying, we hear what the community is saying, and we'll continue to have those discussions between HPD and the development team.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bozark?
Hi, thanks for the presentation, and congrats for getting to this point. It's so awesome to see what was formerly an NYPD parking lot turned into such an amazing project. I do, I still have some existential angst myself that projects like this can take so long. Rezoning was in two thousand seventeen. We're now in two thousand twenty-three. How long do we expect construction to take for this project?
We are projecting construction to take approximately two years.
Okay. Yeah, so just a note again of how long it takes to get projects like this that are going to add so much value and deep affordability into the community, how long it takes to get them into fruition. I just want to reiterate, what I was hearing with you saying is that there's still openness to explore the bedroom mix within financial feasibility, and as this continues, I just want to reiterate the calls on that.
Yeah, the development team is working closely in hand with HPD on that.
Okay. And could the development team also just talk a little bit about its experience in local hiring and its response to some of the recommendations around local hiring?
Yes, I will just turn it over to my colleague Hercules from Mega Contracting Group.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for listening to our proposal here. And regarding minority participation and MWU.
Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hercules, apologies. Hercules Argirio, I'm one of the partners at Mega Contracting. So, we try to be as inclusive as possible, and we've proven we have a great track record as far as the participation, both from the local for new hires and minority participation in our crews. Typically, our construction crews on site are about seventy-five to eighty percent minorities, and we strive to commit for new hires for the, from the community. What we do is we work together with building skills. We create, we have a system where all our subcontractors have to let us know of any new hires that are coming up. We ask building skills to vet applications that we have received and we have submitted to them, and prioritize local hires as far as that goes. As an example, and I think we have a slide here with some, it's on the appendix, you can find it. So, we have exceeded, typically, our projects have a thirty percent minority participation for new hires. On the chart to the right, you'll see that we have far exceeded in many of our projects. Thirty percent is our absolute minimum. We try to be in the fifty, eighty percent, and even over a hundred percent sometimes. And as far as local hires, on the left, you'll see local hires for recent projects that we had, and these are community boards, either from within the community board or from neighboring community boards, just adjoining the community boards. We have, as far as the MWU B hiring, we blast to every subcontractor that has MWU B certification within the city or the state, an email of the project coming, of any projects coming up. We let them know what scopes are available, and all the scopes are available. We ask them to, we invite them to submit a qualification and provide a letter of interest or a notice of interest, and we follow up trying to meet and exceed all the goals that we get. Typically, our projects have a twenty-five percent of minority participation goal. We exceed that, we get to the thirty and forty percent on many of our projects. I don't know if I answered the question?
Yeah, no, that's helpful. Thank you. I do have one more question. Is Lantern going to be marketing this project, or will there be a marketing agent? And if it's Lantern, can you speak a little bit to your experience in marketing and how you plan to market it, especially given the recommendations around outreach to local shelters and ensuring people know they can apply?
Yeah, I'm going to let others?
Yes.
Sure. Hi, I'm Dan Ken, CEO of Lantern Organization.
Thank you.
For the low-income units, we generally work with a marketing agent. So, we're currently working with CGMR at a project at Euclid Glenmore, which we've also partnered with Mega on in Brooklyn, a hundred percent affordable and supportive project. And we have committed to the community board to do outreach at local shelters in connection with the supportive housing units. There were a lot of requests at the community level that we have a community preference for the supportive housing units. That is not something that is currently possible given HRA regulations, but in an effort to respond to that request from the community, we said, well, we know that people who are in shelters can express a preference for where they want to live geographically. So, we're going to go to the shelters and make sure that, you know, as this project is finishing, that they're aware of the opportunity to try to move into Timbale Terrace and that they're asking their caseworkers to place them there.
And a lot of folks in shelters don't necessarily, could qualify for the other units as well, so I just want to make sure that.
Yeah.
It's not just the supportive units that they're being guided to apply for. They could benefit from the lottery in general.
Oh, yeah, great point. And that'll be a part of our broader effort to work with local housing organizations, to spread the word about every housing opportunity. Great point.
Hi, I'm Diane Luard-Michel. I'm on the community services side, the services side. So, and I've been in this industry for almost thirty years. So, one of the things that's kind of new, that's coming out of HRA, is a heightened recognition that people are people and that they don't really respond to algorithms, they respond to what they know. And so, they are now, very recently, within the last year, allowing supportive housing providers to actually do in-reach into local shelters, bring shelter staff and our clients to actually see a new opportunity, and allow them to forge relationships with our housing placement specialists. And it's relatively recent, but we've used in a couple of cases, and it's just amazingly effective. We've had so many problems just going through a blind process, but somehow having people actually see where they're going, being educated about what supportive housing is and is not, and having that element choice has just really opened up doors. And so, I just wanted to say that. And the other thing is that somebody in a family shelter can also enter the lottery system or the housing connect system. And in my past experiences in development, we have actually placed people because we don't have income, source of income, you know, barriers. And we've been able to place people in family shelters into a regular supportive housing unit because they don't need the additional services.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Hi, thank you so much for your great presentation. I'm always excited to see a hundred percent affordable housing. This project has caused a lot of controversy in the community, and my initial thought about it was sort of, I didn't give it much weight, but then I saw a more, you know, there were like three petitions, there's, you know, many articles. And so, because a lot of people do not get to come and testify when we have our public meeting, I want to ask you a couple of questions that the community has said because I'd like a response because, you know, what's the, so here's one. One issue that they bring up is they say that there are two other buildings in this same block run by same applicant that is also supportive housing that they say are not well-run, and causes a lot of problems in the community. And so, that's why they specifically do not want another, that's what they say, that they don't want another building that addresses the same issue because the other two are not well-run. What is your response to that?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. So, we heard that very early on. There were a lot of, I think, generalizations about the supportive housing population that we serve. We have had conversations with community members, with NYPD, with our own staff, to try to verify some of these points about our management and about alleged criminality in front of our buildings. And frankly, you know, we're very proud of the way Prospero and Shafer Hall are run. We've been in the East Harlem community since the year two thousand, and to be frank, none of these complaints came up until we were proposing to create new low-income housing and supportive housing in the neighborhood. But, you know, immediately what we did is we said, okay, we understand there are concerns, not just with our buildings, but also with quality of life issues at large in East Harlem. So, we formed a community advisory board. In April, we invited our critics to come into our buildings, meet with us, share any specific incidents that have occurred. And there hasn't been a lot of issues that have been raised over the last few months, but they've been productive meetings, they've been cordial meetings. And one of the conditions of the community board was to continue that community advisory board process so that we can continue to have a seat at the table, not just in addressing any perceived issues from our own buildings, but also to be a part of a broader solution as neighbors to some of these concerns with quality of life issues.
I have a few more questions.
Sure.
Okay, so the other issue that they raise is they, and I think this also comes up a lot with homeless shelters. So, one issue they raise is a sort of fear-share argument, which is that this particular zip code one zero zero three five has point-two percent of the New York State's population, but eleven percent of the drug treatment program capacities, which is part of the supportive housing. And so, their specific ask is that they don't, why do we need another one because there are already so many in the neighborhood? So, my specific question to that is, what is the thinking behind adding more to the specific neighborhood?
So, just to be clear, our permanent supportive housing is not a drug treatment facility. There has been a lot of conflation about what, oh, no, I totally, yes, yes, yes. No, thank you, because there has been, as I alluded to before, there's been a lot of conflation about what supportive housing is. Are there a disproportionate number of methadone clinics in East Harlem? Yes. Is supportive housing a form of a methadone clinic? Absolutely not. We view supportive housing as being a solution to the problems that folks have with this idea of oversaturation because we provide stability to people who have struggled with homelessness and behavioral health challenges. We solve that problem. And to me, you know, the question of oversaturation, we, the reason we proposed supportive housing for this project was because the East Harlem Neighborhood Plan called for it, the Community Visioning Report for this site called for it, and the Statement of District Needs for Community Board eleven, as recent as twenty twenty-three, said that there was a need for this type of housing for this neighborhood. So, in our view, we're responding to the needs of the people in this community by including those units.
So, it's really important to understand the distinction. it's really important to understand the distinction between housing, permanent lease-based housing for people who are exiting homelessness and in search of stability and a way to rebuild their lives. Housing is housing. You can say housing is a form of healthcare, but it's not treatment. Treatment facilities are very different. They, um, are, are focused around addressing, treating a particular health condition. It is open to any, to larger numbers of the community and the city wa, city writ large, whoever the clientele is. We actually provide a home for a set number of people and, um, and the services that we provide are supportive for that. It may include linkages to services if that becomes a need, or the treatment that becomes a need. For the most part, they're about supporting people's stability, their growth, their, um, their potential to rise above whatever brought them into homelessness.
And, and just to piggyback off of Diane's point, one thing we're really proud about at Lantern, and I think this touches on both of your questions, is throughout our portfolio, we have a ninety-nine percent housing stability rate for our supportive housing tenants. That means that year over year, folks are either staying stably housed with us or they're moving on to permanent housing somewhere else. It means they're not ending up back in the shelters or ending up in the, the kinds of tragic outcomes that we often see for homeless New Yorkers. So we're, we're very proud of that statistic.
I think that I was going to ask about the preference part. Is there anything, and I mean, I, you probably know, I mean, this is in, yes, there's all these news articles about it. Is there anything, um, that the community has said that you would like to address also? I just want to give you all a chance to respond. When they, we have the public meeting, it generally is, some people come, some people don't, but, you know, there's just a certain perception that I think it helps people have
Yeah, I think, um, you, you mentioned a petition that was circulated against our project, three, okay.
One support, one against, and a cover.
So, yeah, and the one against that said that East Harlem needs supportive housing for seniors and it needs supportive housing for local East Harlem residents. And we said, you know, yes, that's what our supportive housing does. We're able to serve local residents by conducting the outreach that we've committed to at local shelters. So that's one way that we've responded. But also, you know, we shared some numbers on our existing buildings. At Prospero and Schaefer Hall, fifty-four percent of our current residents are over the age of fifty-five. So the beauty of supportive housing and the work that we're doing is that we can serve a wide range of different ages, backgrounds, people from different neighborhoods. So we, we feel that part of how we've responded to some of the community concerns and questions is by inviting them in. And we actually held tours with, um, how many was it? Over twenty community board members. Um, we said, you know what? The best way to let folks know what supportive housing is and the work that we're doing at Schaefer and Prospero Hall is to have them into the building. Come meet our staff, come meet our tenants, come see for yourself whether this is some disorderly, mismanaged building or if it's just, you know, nice apartment buildings that nice people live in. And that is what I think led from the initial kind of community controversy of Timbali Terrace to us getting a almost unanimous community board support and unanimous land use committee support. So we think that's the best thing we can do to kind of cut through some of the misinformation. And we welcome any of you to come visit us, uh, at our existing buildings. We're, we're always happy to, uh, welcome folks in.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodrich, Commissioner Sori, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to make, uh, one last point on that of the adding to Lantern's comments about the project and just the responses that it's currently a parking lot that is not really maximizing on any benefit for the community. And one hundred percent affordable housing for a neighborhood that is going through a lot is definitely a response. I think that will benefit New Yorkers in this area for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks so much, Commissioner Goodrich, for your following up on the question. And, and I, you know, I, I hear you, I understand, uh, your general response to housing preference. But I just wanted to sort of like build on Commissioner Goodrich's question because the community board is not asking generally about housing preference. They're specifically asking whether you would set aside units for eligible formerly homeless households, particularly single adults with children, seniors, survivors of domestic violence and single young adults aging out of the foster care. So I'm wondering if, if you have a response to what seems to be a pretty specific, uh, question?
Yeah, so our response to that question is that, first of all, we are able to serve several of those populations through the New York fifteen fifteen population designation that we have selected for the project. Um, beyond that, there are limits because of H R A policies on what types of preferences you can have for supportive housing. Um, you cannot have a preference as the developer or the property owner for a community preference in the same way that you can for low-income housing, right? So we've committed to the maximum community preference for the low-income housing. We cannot do that for the H R A referrals. As an attempt to work around that, that's why we're going to be conducting the outreach in the local shelters.
Thank you. That, that answers my question.
So in the New York, New York program, there aren't, um, there aren't age restrictions, right? So she could be eighteen and you could be aging out of foster care, you could be eighty-five and you could still qualify under that rubric. And so what we found, and even that, you know, the, the fact that, um, we have a building that's twenty-three years old, our average tenancy is like nineteen years, close to nineteen years. So our thing is always about providing a stable platform and ongoing support so that people do not return to homelessness and other kinds of institutional settings. That's, that's, that's what we do. And we do it really successfully based on our numbers. All right, so I think we wanted to keep it as broad as possible. We have a lot of experience. If you face it, we, we don't have that capacity to serve, uh, populations effectively as well as well.
Thank you, that's useful. Okay, great, thank you. That's, uh, all the questions we have for the applicant team. So we thank you very much for your time and your attention. Uh, and, uh, we're now going to invite, uh, some others up to testify, uh, although they are all on Zoom, so they will be present with us in a different form. Um, we're going to start with Cynthia Stewart and to follow up with George James and then Doreen W. Uh, so let's start with Cynthia Stewart. Ms. Stewart, is that you?
That is me.
Great, whenever you are ready, you have three minutes.
There we go. Okay, hi, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. You can all hear me, yes?
We can, yes.
So, um, to speak in, in support of Timbali Terrace. My name's Cynthia Stewart and I'm the Chief Operating Officer of the Supportive Housing Network of New York. And we're a membership organization that represents some two hundred nonprofits across the state that run some fifty-five thousand units of supportive housing. Our organization grew up alongside the supportive housing movement that started in the early eighties. So I can wholeheartedly attest to the safety and effectiveness of supportive housing, which has been built in New York for more than thirty years. It has a sterling reputation for being both the premier intervention for helping the most, our most vulnerable neighbors live stably in the community, as well as for being an excellent and responsive neighbor. There are dozens of studies that prove the effectiveness of supportive housing in ending homelessness, and there's even a study in New York City proving that supportive housing actually improves property values, which is a measurement of neighborhood safety and desirability. But even though I've worked in supportive housing for nearly thirty years, I'm, and a diehard proponent, I'm here to remind you that the supportive housing is only a relatively small part of this development. This project will create nearly two hundred and fifty affordable apartments as well, half of which will be prioritized for this community board. And that means that you, the people who, um, have been priced out of the neighborhood can continue to live here and in a beautiful new apartment. I'm also here to remind you that the creation of an Afro-Latin music center is a tremendous gift to this community and a reminder of its rich heritage and enormous cultural contributions. And all three of these components of this beautiful new project will create both construction and long-term jobs for folks in this community. So in short, Timbali Terrace will be a stunning addition to the neighborhood and I very much hope that you can support it.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Stewart. Okay, great, we were going to move on to, uh, George James, who's also joining us by Zoom.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. James, hold on a moment. Mr. James, give us a moment. We have a fire, a drill, an alarm test that's happening here in the hearing room. We're just going to recess for a moment so that happens.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, my name is George James. Um, I've been the consulting planner.
Mr. James.
George, we're going to pause.
Mr. James, let's hold you just for one moment. We have a
No problem.
Fire alarm test here in the building at one twenty Broadway, which may be exciting, it may not be super exciting, but we're just going to pause for about sixty seconds to see what happens and then we'll let you proceed. Just bear with us for a moment.
No problem.
All right, Mr. James, it sounds like we're, uh, we're good. Uh, so whenever you are ready, you can go ahead and get started.
So again, my name is George James. I've been the consulting planner to Community Board Eleven for the past ten years. Uh, today I'm here on my own time to offer my support for Timbali Terrace. I submitted written comments last week and I will not repeat the project's long planning history in East Harlem, but I will say that this project and other projects that are in the pipeline are a testament to the power and effectiveness of community-based planning when it's combined with H B D and D C P implementation. And the numbers bear out that effectiveness. Compared to other community, Manhattan community districts since two thousand and fourteen, East Harlem has produced the most new construction affordable housing, produced the most new construction affordable housing, serving the lowest income bands, and preserved the most existing affordable housing by far. Now, Community District Eleven has not produced the most new housing total, but it has produced the most affordable housing and affordability was the focus of the plan. Projects like Timbali Terrace with a hundred percent affordable housing reaching the lowest income bands is an important part of planned implementation. Now, I came here today because, to my surprise, and as Commissioner Goodrich said, this project had substantial community opposition. I've been to nearly every Community Board Eleven Land Use Committee meeting over the past ten years and I have never seen anything quite like it. As someone who believes we must listen to the community, I make the following comment. The East Harlem Neighborhood Plan called for something substantially similar to Timbali Terrace on this site. The plan prioritizes not only affordable housing, but also housing for the homeless and supportive housing. The opposition to the project concerned the supportive housing component. Neighbors see crime and disorder in the streets and they believe that the supportive housing will bring more to the neighborhood. Let me be clear, the concerns that the neighbors have about crime and disorder in East Harlem are completely legitimate concerns. None of us should live with that. And they are right that the city should be doing more to find solutions to these very serious problems. But Timbali Terrace and the housing it bring is not the problem. It is part of the solution to the very problems that have motivated not only these neighbors to get involved, but which brought out the larger community to develop the East Harlem Neighborhood Plan in the first place. This project helps realize that plan and it deserves your support. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. James. We have a question for you from Commissioner Goodrich.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to point out, um, my assessment of the, the community members who are in opposition to it isn't that they are against the concept of affordable housing. It is that this specific applicant has two other similar types of buildings on the same block that are not, from their perception, well-run. And so, um, it, it has caused like problems in the neighborhood. So their, their specific issue that, from what I understand, isn't actually supportive housing, it's that this particular developer, um, has similar buildings that cause, you know, causes problems in the neighborhood. I just wanted to point that out.
If I may respond, I mean, I, I heard a lot of comments during the, uh, hearings and there was a lot of, um, uh, pushback on both this, um, you know, the buildings, but there was also a lot of general comments about supportive housing. That's, that, that there were a lot of people who testified that had issues with, um, supportive housing for, it was like the wrong type of people. They wanted supportive housing for, um, you know, that served other, other populations. So, you know, we heard, heard a lot of that. But yes, there was, um, complaints about this particular, uh, operator and the other projects that they have.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. James. Good to see you. Thanks for being here. Next up is Doreen W., also on Zoom.
Hi, good morning. My name is Doreen Burton and I live here at Prospero Hall. I really appreciate supportive housing. I was in the shelter for three years. At that time, the director at the shelter at the stadium was Diana Santos. And she asked me if I would be willing to stay in the shelter while they put up this building Prospero Hall. I appreciate that the building has done a lot for me. I appreciate the case managers. I appreciate all that they have done for me and what they are still doing for me. I'm looking forward to this new building coming up right across the street from me. I'm looking forward to having new neighbors. I'm pretty sure the building is going to spruce up the neighborhood. And I was listening to some of the other things that some of the commissioners was talking about as far as, uh, the things that go on here as far as crime is concerned. See, it's not the building. It's some of the people that are being brought into this neighborhood, that are being brought into some of these buildings. I think maybe people should be screened a little bit more. Certain people belong in certain other buildings and maybe not in a, a building where there's decent people with families. And then you might want to bring in somebody that has, uh, a mental health issue. And maybe they should be in another building that deals with their health issues. But, uh, I appreciate, uh, supportive housing because they have done a lot for me. I thank you guys very much for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. Thank you very much for taking the time to be with us today. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you for having me.
Great, okay, well, um, I'm going to just do a final call to see if there are any other members of the public who are either here in the hearing room or who have, uh, signed up to testify. I see none, uh, at the moment, going once, going twice. Okay, um, with that, we will close the hearing on, uh, Timbali Terrace, calendar number twenty-three and twenty-four. Uh, Madam Secretary, uh, is there any other business before the commission today? Remembering, of course, that we have one item for our, um, uh, special review session, which we're going to pick up as soon as this is over, but for our, uh, public, uh, public meeting here, anything else?
No, check, uh, there is no other business before the commission for the public meeting, but I do have some public information to share. For those who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the N Y C Engage portal, through D C P's website, or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, one twenty Broadway, thirty-first floor, New York, New York, one zero two seven one. And I'll just note the time is eleven ten A M.
Great, and with that, uh, we are now adjourned on our public meeting. And with that, we are now adjourned on our public meeting, and I will reopen our special review session. We have Susan Amron in the room, and the subject was the scope determination on Belmont Osborne, the cut of one of the two sites in question, and if Commissioner Benjamin will allow me to summarize her question, you can tell me if I get it wrong, is whether limiting the rezoning to a single site over two has any potential impact on a scope determination if it could legally be determined that that was a spot rezoning because of its lack of connectivity to other things. I don't know if I've done great. She did it much better than I did, but I think the substance is more or less correct. Okay.
Okay. And first, apologies for missing the question. I was in another meeting and...
Quite right.
But saw the messages. So just a couple of things. One, just assuming that we're spot zoning, and I think that's a different question. The charter is very clear that the commission's scope determination is limited to just two issues, whether the modification would have additional review, require additional review for environmental issues, and whether it would require additional ULR determination. So beyond those two, the answer, it's really not within the commission's scope determination to make. So if it were spot zoning, that would be something we may not agree with, but it's not part of our scope determination.
Are you saying that if something illegal was created, that would not be part of our scope determination?
So the issue comes, and, I mean, strictly speaking under the charter, it would not be. The issue comes when with something like spot zoning or others where the council takes action on a modification that we may or may not agree with. Question of spot zoning is really a question of rationality of the decision of the land use, of what's been done.
It's a more fulsome explanation.
But it is not about whether it's one applicant's, just a single site. It's not about whether it's just, you know, one applicant's, one person's property versus other properties. And I do want to clarify that because we've gotten some more clarifying information. It really is about whether there is a rationale for the determination. And there is almost never an instance where, almost never, I would say never, where something that has come through this process is spot zoning. But where the council makes determinations, we do assume that they have, or modifications, we do assume that there's a rationale behind what they're doing. And, you know, really tried, we don't, you know, we just assume that whatever they're doing, they have some reason for doing it. Their leeway in making decisions is broader than the commission's leeway in terms of what they can take into account. And so, you know, it's, I don't think there's been a situation where something that went through the ULR process, even with a modification, has been determined or reviewed as spot zoning. We do get challenged on that a lot, but we don't lose. I'd say that knocking on wood because the future is still the future. I do also, though, want to point out, and the applicant texted us, and we confirmed that here, both, there are both applicant and non-applicant sites that were removed from the rezoning and that remain in the rezoning. So it's not also, not a situation where it's just a single, a single landowner whose property is being rezoned, which, again, would not necessarily and typically would not be spot zoning, but that's also not what the council did here.
Thank you for that, Susan. As you can tell, it's one of my issues about whether it, in fact, is part of that well-considered plan, and whether, in fact, removing those properties still leaves a well-considered plan. I understand the scope determinations, although I think there's more flexibility in what is scope than we may always exercise, but I do thank you for that explanation. Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you both for the clarifications. I had a slightly different question, going back to Commissioner Gold's question earlier. I was wondering if you can clarify for us whether we know, whether we've received any information in terms of what is the actual affordability, sort of like, at what percentage of the AMI would those units that we're losing would have been at? In other words, we know that, we're talking about affordable housing, but we, can you clarify the units that otherwise, that we're losing, basically, at what percentage of the AMI would have been subsidized?
I'm going to defer to Judy on this question.
Thanks, Susan. Thanks, Commissioner Osorio. So I don't have a unit breakdown. What I can say is that at the time of the public hearing that you all heard from the developer and subsequently, their plan was for the, both developments, to pursue Ella financing to provide, again, 100% income restricted, and then a set of income mixes sort of based off of what Ella finances. I unfortunately do not have the breakdown of it, but presumably, the sort of the spread between the two proposed developments would be similar to other Ella projects. I can't, I don't know the specifics, but what is being cut was not necessarily the sort of level of subsidy or the AMI bands for specific units, so much as the quantity of the income restricted units being provided. If that answers your question.
Exactly.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Now, we're on to our official scope determination, where I will seek assent by a voice vote to seek approval and to send a letter to the city council that these modifications are in fact within scope. So in so doing, I will ask for assent by a voice vote right now to send a letter to the council that the modifications here on Belmont Osborne are within scope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay.
Nay.
Okay, ayes have it. Thank you very much. We have an abstention, and we have two abstentions and a no. The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, wait, hold. Time out. Do you want to call, do people want actually to call a thing? I mean, we have, we have a scope determination here, and if we have an opinion from the General Counsel of the agency that this is within scope under the environmental review of this project. So I will call the roll, and we will ask people to call their votes. Okay, listen, you vote, vote how you need to vote, but I do want to... Go ahead, pose a question.
It'll be super quick. I sort of did not catch, I know, change in the...
So what I was saying is the, it would be, so the level of affordability, I can't speak concretely to the level of affordability change. Presumably, it would have been spread across two buildings, but what was being lost here as far as looking at the envi, like, the environmental review for this project is the quantity of the units. So less units provided.
Overall.
Overall, yes. And then sort of by extension of that, if all of them were income restricted, less income restricted units being provided.
But still 100% income.
From what the applicant was proposing, it was still proposed to be, yes, 100% income restricted, and then we're talking about using Ella financing from HPD.
Okay, so good.
You're fine. I'm yes.
So it's still 100% income restricted, but the number of units may be less.
And yes, and then, of course, with any rezoning, it's the, it being 100% income restricted, as we discussed in the public review process, is contingent on the financing from HPD and the subsidy. Thanks. Go ahead, Susan.
Can I, just, because I just, I think it's important to understand precisely what the charter says and then what our scope letter says, so I'm just reading from 197D of the charter, section paragraph D, under 197D, which deals with scope determination. Within 15 days of such filing, which is the filing of the council with the commission of the proposed modification, the commission shall file with the council a written statement indicating whether such proposed modifications are of such significance that additional review of environmental issues or additional review pursuant to Section 197(c) ULR is required. And so that is, under the charter, is the limit of what our scope determination is. When we send a scope letter to the commission, we parrot that language. So we don't say, this is great, this is bad, we like this. We don't. We simply say, we have reviewed your modifications and have concluded that no further environmental review is required, and no further review under Section 197(c) of the charter is required. So it's not about really, under the charter, it's not about, and we don't say anything to the council about the merits. We simply say you do, that what you're doing doesn't require additional review under either of these two things.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. With that, I'm going, since it sounds like some people are going to vote no and some are going to abstain, let's just call the vote. Madam Secretary, go ahead. Let's do it like we do in a normal public meeting. Go ahead.
Chair Grabnek.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Bozark.
Also reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Strulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowe.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Madden.
No.
Commissioner Osorio.
Oh, yes, but I have a question. Can we, in our letter, somehow reflect the concerns, the questions, even within sort of like the context of what you explained? Is that possible?
We, well, we try and keep the scope letters, and this is just our approach to it, absolutely clean and very narrow, and not to use them for other things just because it muddies the question of scope. I do know that the council staff watch these meetings, and we can certainly, I think, flag it for them outside, but I would urge that we not use the scope letter for something that's really not strictly about scope.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And just to clarify, is there another way in which we can formalize sort of like the concerns or questions?
That, we can, we can talk about that, and I think that it's a, it's a fair point for us to raise the concern about the loss of 123 units of affordable housing here. Scope probably isn't the place for it, but yes, we should talk about how best to do that. And just for the sake of order, I think my preference here would be for us to pose the questions before the votes, take the vote. If you have further questions, we can do it after. Let's just call the final two.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Is that it? Anybody else? Okay. All right. Not a voice vote, but the ayes have it. Thank you very much. This item is in scope. We'll send a letter accordingly. And with appreciation to all of you for your time and energy today, of course, the staff of the department. Madam Secretary, I believe that we are now done with our business for both the public meeting and the special review session. Do I have it correct?
That is correct, Chair Grabnek.
Wonderful. Time is now 11:23, and we are adjourned. Thank you.